Good evening. I call to order the Lake Havasu City Council meeting on Tuesday, October 12th, 2021, at 6:00 PM. Public participation in the meeting is here in person at the city council chambers, or you can watch the meeting live on Channel 4, or you can go to LHCaz.gov/tv. We will now have an invocation from Chaplain B. Evans from City on a Hill International Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance from the Young Adult Development Association of Havasu by Ricardo and Lori.
Hi, everybody. It's nice to see you all again, always is. Let's pray. Father God, we just thank you so much. We thank you for our wonderful city. We thank you that the heat is finally gone and we're enjoying just a little coolness. We thank you, Father, that we're not wearing masks. We're so grateful. We thank you for this council, Lord, that are so in tune to each other and to the cities' citizens, Father. I thank you that they've done their homework and they're ready for tonight. I thank you, Father, that their yes will be yes and their no will be no because they've asked for wisdom. And you say, if we ask for it, you give it. So we just thank you in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Very nice.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for being here. If you want to share a little bit about your organization with the community?
Sure. Thank you very much. Thanks for having us. We are the Young Adult Development Association of Havasu, otherwise known as YADA. And one of the things that we do as we do drug prevention for our youth is we sponsor the Walk Away From Drugs. And so this year, it's coming up on Wednesday, October 27th, and it is at the, what is the park they're calling it now?
It's the Parcel on McCollack, formerly known as Spring Bird and McCandrew Park.
That's always way too much for me to say. And the lineup starts at 5:00, and the walk begins at 5:30. It's about three quarters of a mile around the block. We don't even have to cross the street. When you come back, there's going to be free tacos, and we'll have some community agencies and programs out there to share resources with people and have some games. It's free to everybody. Bring your families. It's gonna be a great night.
Awesome. All right, everyone. Hello, I'm Ricardo. I'm with Arizona Youth Partnership, also a member of the YADA Coalition. I wanted to talk a little bit about another event we have coming up next month. So we are putting on an underage drinking prevention event for the youth. So we partnered with the Church of the Nazarene here in Lake Havasu. And so there's gonna be plenty of games, activity, awareness, resources available for youth of every age, snacks too. So if you want to come and bring your families to that as well, it's going to be Saturday, November 13th, from 1:00 to 4:00 at the Church of the Nazarene.
Excellent. Yeah, thank you. Thank you for all that you're doing for our community. Thank you so much. The next item on our agenda is the roll call. Ms. Williams, if you please call the roll.
Councilmembers Nancy Campbell?
Present.
Jim Dolan?
Here in the nick of time.
David Lane?
Here.
Michelle Lynn?
Here.
Cameron Moses?
Here.
Vice Mayor Jenny Koch?
Here.
Mayor Kal Sheehy?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is the Call to the Public. This is where citizens have the opportunity to address the city council on matters within the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu City. Your comments would be limited to three minutes. There is a light indicator box next to Ms. Williams. Green means you have three minutes. Yellow means you have one minute remaining, and red means that the three minutes is up. When you speak at Call to the Public, if you're here for one of the items that's on our public hearings, we encourage you to wait till that time so we can have a two-way conversation. But because things that you may bring up during Call to the Public are not on the agenda, we can't have a two-way conversation. So we'll listen intently and see what we can do based on those comments. You do not have to sign up, but we did have several of you that did sign up today. So we'll just call those up in the order, and then we'll open up to anyone else that didn't. So we'll start with B. Evans. Good evening and welcome.
Thank you. Hello again. In the last few months, I've been to more than one meeting. I've been to several. And of course, a lot of you have been at the same meetings. And I don't know if it's just my age, probably is, but I couldn't believe the unkindness and disrespect that was given to not only our council, but our mayor. And it was so disruptive to me, I just couldn't believe it. So I thought, well, the next one will be better. And it wasn't getting better. And not that I'm making excuses for anybody, but I just know we're all a little concerned about our country, the way the world's going, and probably because we have a pretty face out in front, and he's so willing, he gets it. He gets it full force at almost every meeting. And I'm telling you, our mayor doesn't make decisions all on his own and decides to just pass decisions along because he likes it. I'm sure he absolutely runs it before the council every single time. So it's not just him, it's all of you, I suppose. I would have fingers pointed at you. Whoever heard of such a thing? It's unbelievable. So I just wanted to say tonight, Mayor, we love you. The citizens of Lake Havasu City respect you. We just know that you have gifts within you, love, peace, patience beyond belief, goodness, kindness, self-control. Sometimes I wonder how you can sit there and not just punch them in the nose. But I know, I know how you are, and you're just such a blessing to us. I just want to thank you. I don't know if all the citizens agree with me, but I know anybody I talk to certainly does. So we love you and thank you so much. Thank you all for doing your homework. And the bridge looks beautiful with the new lighting. God bless you all.
Thank you. The next speaker is John Migielo. Sorry about that, sir, but good evening and welcome.
Thank you. I want to go ahead. My name is John Migielo, J-O-H-N-M-I-G-A-I-O-L-O. I'm speaking in behalf of the Lost Logos Vista HOA. And I would like to discuss the significant water increase that was implemented July 1st. I know you've heard a lot of comments about it, and I don't want to certainly get adversarial to it, but prior to July 1st, the sewer and water bill was $11,583 at our complex. July 1, $28,102.11, the difference of $16,518.16. A 142.5% increase in our water bill. Our HOA cannot handle that significant increase with the fixed income of people that reside in our complex. Our complex is 224 units. We're a large complex. 30% is occupied full-time. We have a six-inch water meter that our HOA put in place, $18,000 of our cost, to make sure that it was calibrated through the city in accordance to go ahead and maintain that water flow for proper billing. Unfortunately, all of a sudden, these bills come up, and we go from $11.14 for our sewer meter to $48.67 per unit for 224 units, which comes up to $10,00900. And this is just the sewage. You understand our rates, open to the public, mayor, city manager. You acknowledge that you didn't realize at the time that this was going to be an increase. And I'm asking you not to be adversarial, but to do what's right and revisit your calibrations and how you're going about your billing, because a lot of it doesn't make sense to us that it's impacting all of us in the community. And it's not myself, it's the other coalition of all the other multi-housing units in our area. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your service.
Thank you for your comments. We will be having that conversation on October 26th. So our next council meeting, it'll be on the agenda, and we'll have that full discussion for consideration. So please attend that meeting as well.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, the next speaker is Dave Harvey. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. I too have got an issue with the water and sewer. I own a triplex that just me and my wife are living in. We bought it to retire here and have family members move in when they get here. But our rate went from $87 in July, and we used 2,800 gallons of water that month, to $178, and we used 1,800 gallons of water in August. So that's almost 100% increase. And the people that have these multiplex units are the people that can't afford to pay these types of rates. They're the citizens that are, when you talk about the people needing low-income housing, well, that's the people that are going to live in these multiplex units. Now granted, we're not renting the units anymore, but the people there have got to find a place to live, and the teachers and the hospital workers and that are going to be going to those multiplex units to try to, you know, that's where they're going to be living. And if we raise these rates upon them like that, the renters or the owners of the property have no choice but to pass that on to the renters. And that's not fair to them. There needs to be some type of a, some type of a rate reduction. Now, I know that you guys are going to address it on the 26th. Unfortunately, I'm going to be out of town again. But I was wondering, is it possible that we could maybe put like a $5 room charge on all these hotel rooms per night and call it a water conservation tax and let maybe some in California pay for some of this infrastructure? I don't know if that's possible, but I know that if you're, the room rates at London Bridge are $200 a night, I don't think anybody would have a problem paying $205 a night. I just, I don't know if we can do that or not, but I think that'd be a way to generate some profit for the city, and that would balance out some of this money that they're having to pay for the sunsetting bill that comes in June. So that's, that's what I, I'm here to just let you know that those rates need to be adjusted. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you for your comments. The next speaker is Robert Fisher. Good evening and welcome.
Oh, thank you. I'd like to just put my voice along with the two previous speakers. I retired three years ago and moved here from the People's Republic of Seattle area. And I thought I'd escaped a bunch of that kind of stuff because the taxes there was killing me for just my, a single-family home. So I'd like for you to put my voice with theirs for you to revisit this stuff and not be clobbering the idea of any affordable housing efforts that you're trying to do as well, because as you can see, it makes it unaffordable. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for your comments. The next speaker is Martin Stansberry.
Mayor and council, I'm glad to hear that the water issue will be on the next agenda. I didn't realize that, so my whole speech just gets thrown out real quick. So I just, it's come to my attention, I think we're still collecting the IDT tax that we were collecting, that this new water rate is supposed to cover. Is there some reason why we can't suspend the current rate increase until we get this worked out? And I hear a lot of the HOA folks talking about the water rate increase, but what they, what they probably don't understand that I might as a real estate broker is, if their HOA has enough reserve to pay that water bill while we figure this thing out, the reserves are going to go down solo, that those units won't be saleable to anybody that gets conventional loan, and no cash buyer is going to buy a condo if the HOA's near insolvency. So this is a crisis that needs to be dealt with immediately. And if we are still collecting the old IDT, it just seems sensible that we could suspend the new rate increase until we revisit this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Greg Befford.
My name is Greg Befford. I'd just like to start by saying that at the Coffee with the Mayor meeting last week, I might have been a little aggressive in my tone, and I apologize for that. But what I won't apologize for is my reason for being up here. And whether it's as a Havasu patriot or as the president of our HOA, my passion is out of concern for humanity. We've been up here, myself and my group, our group has been up here for the last year talking to you about government overreach and the implications of decisions that a few people that call themselves government and the implications that they have and the unintended consequences and the harm that's caused as a result of decisions that you make. Now, whether that's COVID-19 and the government overreach in response, and the freedoms that are being destroyed as a result of that, or if it's a tax being, or a hike in sewer and water increases at the local level here, these two issues dovetail to me. With the COVID-19 issue, we had government coming in and a group of people deciding who can shop and who can't, which stores would be open, which ones weren't, who you could, how far you could be from people, masks. Now we're at inoculations, or you lose your job. Okay? That was causing harm to people back then, and we tried to get you, as a city council here, to come off of your position with this local emergency proclamation, and it's still up after 18 months, that it's still up. You're supporting that narrative. Again, you ignored the moral implications of the decisions that you made. And whether you stayed silent as a city council, your message said everything by not standing up and saying, this is wrong. We made a mistake. We need to correct course. We need to change direction. You were not willing, you're still not willing to do that. Still not willing to admit that you made a mistake. Now, I don't know if it's ego identification or what the issue is, but you need to correct course. You need to correct course with the response, with the local emergency proclamation, and write a proclamation that says, you know what? We understand what's happening here. We're not going to have any part of it. We're not going to impose unconstitutional mandates on our citizens here. We're not going to do it. We're not going to support any business that does either. Whether it's a hospital, or whether it's a restaurant, or whether it's a corporation, we're going to protect the rights of our citizens here. And that's all we ask. And my concern is that humanity's asleep, and we're about to, we're slow-walking into our own slavery here. And we're up here for a reason. Now again, you know, I harbor no ill will towards any of you, any of you. I am passionate about this, and I think you know that my message has been consistent this whole time. We are not going to sit here and stand for a government that, or a group of people that make arbitrary decisions about our best interests here. We're not going to stand for it. There has to be accountability, and that's what we're, that's what we're here for. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. The next speaker is Christine Simmons. Good evening and welcome.
I think I have to lower this a little bit. There we go. Chief, I heard something on the news today that really upset me. A high school girl in Wyoming was not wearing a mask, and the chief arrested her. I don't think mandates are law yet. I don't know, but anyway, the sheriff and police followed through with that, and I was very disappointed to hear that. I'm surprised they're still called man-dates and not woke dates or trans dates. I mean, you know, that's coming, right? Okay, but what I'm here to talk to you tonight is, you see my new shirt? It's the preamble. And I've joined a group called Pace, and it's right here in Havasu, and it's been going on for a long time. And these wonderful patriots help teach children, our youth, about our Constitution, about the Bill of Rights. And it's a phenomenal program. The teachers do the teaching, but Pace supplies them the materials. And I'm learning so many things. Did you know that many of our forefathers weren't even born here? They were born in other countries. So that's really kind of cool. And they adopted the US as their country. So Pace is phenomenal. We meet at the American Legion the second Tuesday of the month, from 10:00 to 11:00. Join us and find out what's going on, especially if you're a patriot or a vet. I think you'd be very proud to know this is going on in our schools. Another thing I wanted to talk to you about at the bottom is a young girl named Ruby. She knew about kindness before I did. I mean, she learned it at 11 years old. She was helping her mother at a nursing home, and she saw a patient there very unhappy. And she said, why are you so sad? And she said, I had to say goodbye to my dog after 12 years because I can't have him here. So Rudy got the idea, what if I asked all the people here, if I could grant them three wishes? What would they wish for? Money? A house? What? The things were so simple, and she was able to find them and provide them. Maybe fresh fruit, or a piece of chocolate cake, or maybe slippers that fit. So she's gone global now, and you can see her on YouTube, and this is perfect, I think, for Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts. What about a teacher wanting to get her students to write? Great pen pal. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. The next speaker is Don Wisdom. Good evening, welcome.
City Council? Water. Now, I've been thinking about this. In our building, we pay so much a month for water and sewer. Now, if we magically take every unit, became a home, are we going to be using more water? I don't think so. We're still going to be using the same amount of water, but we're going to be taxed a lot more. And I have no idea what the tax would be. The purpose of the billing for water use is nothing changes except to have stealing water by having us on a individual contract, individual meter. And then the other point, who's going to pay for these water meters? You're going to charge us? Who's going to pay for it? I understand they could be read electronically, that's not an issue. But if you're not using more water than you have been using, where are you getting the extra money? You're not using any more water. It's going to be the same. So I will be here on the 26th. Are you going to have a question and answers? What time is the meeting on the 26th?
It'll be our normal council meeting at 6:00 PM, and it will be a public hearing where we can have two-way conversation.
So it will be 6:00 PM, just like today. Thank you. Thank you for your work.
Yeah, thank you. The next speaker is Greg Logan. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm here to ask the city council to revisit ordinance number 19-1214 of March 2019, which amended the Lake Havasu City Code, Chapter 2.04, regarding agenda items, procedures placed before the council for consideration or potential action. While the entire code needs revision to ensure the public and our elected representatives and not unelected bureaucrats have the final say on which items will be addressed by the council on behalf of the public. Specifically, Section 2.04.280 gives a city manager too much authority to negate any request from the council member, a single council member, or to determine the best course of action. That should be a collective city council matter. In Section 2.04.290, entitled "Public Request," I'll quote from a portion of the section, quote, "If the city manager determines that the matter is not appropriate to be placed on the council agenda, the city clerk shall notify the citizen that their request will not be placed on the agenda and provide any additional information as applicable," unquote. While perhaps passed with the best of intentions to improve the efficiency of government, the bottom line is, you, the city council, in March 2019, by your approval of Ordinance Number 19-1214, abrogated and delegated your responsibility to the public, giving the unelected city staff authority over the city agenda. Now, while it is necessary for the city manager to provide input on a day-to-day basis, it is imperative that our elected representatives and officials set the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The next speaker is Diane Klostermeyer.
Good evening and welcome. Thank you. Mayor Sheehy and city council members, I'm addressing those two issues that have come up. My name's Diane Klostermeyer. I've always held each of you in high regard and hope that you will consider my statement as a plea for you to restore your elected authority as our elected representatives who speak for us, the Lake Havasu City residents. It has come to my attention that your city council members and/or residents were unable to put issues for consideration on the city meeting agenda without approval of the Havasu City manager according to our city code. In my humble opinion, this is unconscionable, because members of our city council are elected representatives for our city, who are, the taxpayers are funding the operation, development, improvement of our city. You are to operate as our city's authoritative body, who are elected to review projects, get sealed bids by local and outside area entrepreneurs for design and development. The city staff is not to be controlling what your city council votes to consider or to do. The city manager works for you. How and why the code was changed, I do not know. This has led to the cart leading the horse. Whoever heard of the city manager and staff directing not only the operation of our city, but also enabling the city manager and staff to feel free to select private people from other states and areas, regardless of cost or responsibility for their work? As elected city council members, you are to work to provide leadership and prudent judgment on the best and most economical use of the taxpayers' funds and city resources, while being guardians of maintaining the best form of city improvements and the beauty of our city. I therefore request, on behalf of all our city residents and taxpayers, that the content of our city code be put on the future agenda to address this issue and possibly revise the city code and restore the authority upon each of you, our elected city council members, or will you remain subjected to the whims of the city manager and be denied your authoritative rights because your city manager refuses to agendas it? Anyway, I'll be looking forward to hearing from you on this serious matter. Respectfully, here's Diane. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Bill Mitchell.
Good evening, welcome. Thank you. Well, I feel like everybody already stole my thunder. I was going to come up here and talk about the last two speakers, and I'm going, okay, what's left for me to say? But truly, what I'm, my concern is, is when I found out that the city manager was the one who was approving the agenda items, whether it be coming from the public or whether it be coming from the council members, I was disturbed because we've been trying to hold you guys accountable, and I'm sitting thinking, maybe I'm holding the wrong person accountable. Maybe it should be the city manager that we should be talking to, not you guys, because maybe you're not just getting the input that you ought to get. So likewise, I would also like to voice my concern with this particular ordinance that's been adopted, and I would like to see the responsibility back on you so I can come to you guys and really hold you accountable, not wonder what the city manager is or isn't allowing to be heard at these meetings. So respectfully, that's, I add my voice to what's already been said, and that's my addition.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for your comments. Seems like there's some misinformation on that particular item. It was adjusted to make it easier for citizens and the council to get things on the agenda, but well, your feedback is valuable and important. We'll take a look at it. So that concludes the speakers that have signed up. Would anyone else like to address the city council during Call to the Public? Good evening and welcome. Could you just state your name for the record?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Audi Collins. I'm just here like I normally am, like twice a year. Main Street events. I've, I happened to pass by a meeting last night, and I walked in and I sat in the corner and listened. And the meeting was nice. You guys, they love you guys and girls. And I just wonder why Main Street doesn't get the attention we used to get years ago. They used to have a lot more involvement with the city council and their staff, and it's changed completely. And it's changed completely the last couple of years. It's, it's, I don't know if it's, I know you have a lot more important things to do with the water and all that kind of stuff. But Main Street Association is starting up again and I'm sure they would love to have one of you council members sit in with them on a monthly basis to get together with, maybe we can figure something out for funding. And kid-friendly events on Main Street. Somebody, I heard through somebody saying that Halloween on Main Street is not kid-friendly. Oh, it's kid-friendly. There's over 10,000 kids on Main Street on Halloween, on Fright Night. It's kid-friendly. Most of the bars don't fill up to 9:00, 10:00, 11:00 o'clock at night. The kids are off the street at 7:30, 8:00 o'clock. So it's kid-friendly. There's a lot of things. We put on karaoke for the kids out on the street. A lot of the other venues do things like that. We're so kid-friendly, there's no other place that's safer. You have the police department there. You have the fire department there. You have everybody that you need on Main Street. And it keeps the kids there. The parents are there. It's, I just don't want to, I want more events on Main Street. I want Main Street to grow. The vendors, the stores. A lot of tax money comes out of Main Street. You guys know, of course. And I got nothing else to say, but thank you, guys. You do a great job. I just want more involvement on Main Street. You know, we just got to build it up a little. I don't know what's going on with Springburg Park. I have been not coming to many meetings, but I think I'm going to have to start coming more often just so I can find out what's going on. I appreciate your service. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council at the Call to the Public? All right, we'll go ahead and close the in-person Call to the Public. We do have one written submitted comment. Ms. Williams, if you'd please read that into the record.
This comment was received on Friday, October 8th, 2021. I am addressing the council in regards to the overreach and chipping away of the rights and liberties of the citizens of Lake Havasu by the very people who should be protecting our rights as servants, not tyrants. You work for us, the citizens, not the other way around. Case in point, it was brought to my attention in the paper that the council wants to vote to change an event approval from 30 days to two months. For who? For what reason? Probably the convenience of someone, certainly not the event planner. The decision will probably be willy-nilly of yay. That's a good idea. Meets our needs. Instead, you should be asking the hard questions like you really are representing us. Here are the questions you should be asking. Isn't this one more unneeded government overreach that is unnecessary? How will this affect the citizens? Did we get some input from the people we work for, the citizens? How is this helping to create the trust our public has put in us by making a decision that just benefits a smaller amount of people? Is it necessary to require more restrictions when the goal should be each citizen governing his own behavior? And yes, that last question should be asked of each of you. Your job is to represent our interests, the citizens, not for the convenience of your government bureaucracy. Please, I implore you, start acting like you are one of us. Ask the hard questions, limit government and do all you can to preserve our liberties. Submitted by Karen Vanderjack.
Thank you. All right, that concludes our Call to the Public. We'll now move on to Item 6, the Consent Agenda. Would any of the council members like to remove anything from the consent agenda for separate discussion?
Mayor.
Yes.
Motion?
Please.
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Coke and a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. The next item is Item 7, Correspondence, Communications, Petitions, Announcements and the City Manager Report. Item 7.1 is to announce vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees and Commissions. Ms. Williams.
Mayor and City Council, there are a number of vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees and Commissions. The following is a listing of those vacancies. Board of Adjustment, one regular member and three alternate members. And the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board with one regular member. Anyone interested can pick up a packet at City Hall and they are also available on the city's website at lhcaz.gov. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 7.2 is the City Manager's Report. Good evening, Mr. Knutson.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor and Council. I'd like to start off this evening's manager's report with a congratulations on a retirement. Congratulations to Joe Blanchard in our Fire Department for your retirement after 23 years of service to the Lake Havasu City Fire Department and to our community. Joe started his career as a paid-on-call firefighter in 1998 and ultimately hired on as a firefighter paramedic on August 4th, 2000. Joe, thank you for your dedication and your service to Lake Havasu City and we wish you the best of luck in all your future endeavors. Traditionally, fall brings many events to Lake Havasu City and with the events comes many proclamations, celebrations and ribbon cuttings. Although this is just the beginning. Mayor Sheehy, you were very busy the past two weeks delivering proclamations and were only halfway through the month. With Michael Allen for their annual 24-hour Sleepless Havasu Event. Another proclamation was to the Cancer Association of Havasu for their annual walk event. Another proclamation to the Haven House to celebrate their 25th year anniversary. To the Young Adult Development Association, or YADA, as we heard earlier today, of Havasu to kick off their annual Walk Away From Drugs event. And that'll be held, as we heard, on October 27th. Another proclamation to the Elks Annual Drug Awareness Poster Contest Night to award and recognize all the winners. And to the International Jet Sport Boating Association to commemorate the 40th anniversary of their annual event held here in Lake Havasu City. Such tradition. Initially, Mayor Sheehy, you attended a ribbon-cutting event of October's Lennon Bridge Days, a ribbon-cutting at Pro Watercraft's New Showroom Grand Opening, a celebration for the McCullough Chainsaw Employees Reunion and the Veterans Stand Down Event held at our Aquatic Center. Our Parks and Recreation Department announces we have many events hosted by the city here in October, just this month. This weekend is the Fall Fun Fair. That'll be on the 16th and that'll start at 3:00 PM and end at 8:00 PM. As always, that'll be at the Rotary Park Ballfields. Kids can play games and win prizes and candy at booths that are operated by various local nonprofit organizations. Proceeds go to support these same nonprofit organizations. Attendees are encouraged to dress in costume and tickets can be purchased for the games at the event with cash only for 25 cents or $5 for a bundle of 20. On Saturday, October 22nd, from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM, and Sunday, October 23rd, from 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM, don't miss the annual Lake Havasu Firefighter Charities Pumpkin Festival. And that'll be at the corner of McCullough and Curio on our Main Street. Please enjoy family fun with lots of great activities, including a pumpkin patch, petting zoo, games, face painting and much, much more. That cost is $5 per person and kids under three are free. It all goes to a fantastic charity. On Thursday, the 28th, at 6:00 PM, following the dedication of the Lennon Bridge, the 2021 Youth Talent Show, brought to us through a generous contribution by the Lake Havasu Marina and other generous local sponsors, will take place at the stage under the Lennon Bridge. Registration is required if you want to be a participant and will be taken on October 19th at the Aquatic Center. Please, please contact our Parks Department or stop by the Aquatic Center if you're interested in performing. And on Sunday, October 31st, on Halloween night, please join us for our Boo Bash Event at the Aquatic Center and at the Aquatic Center Pool. That'll be from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM. This event includes trick-or-treating, games and bounce house will take place on the lawn of the Aquatic Center. There'll also be a swimming movie featuring the movie Hotel Transylvania and that'll be at the pool. This fun event is free to attend and candy and popcorn are included. Come have some not-so-scary fun and bring your bathing suit for a family-friendly evening. And please join us as we celebrate the golden anniversary of the completion and dedication of the Lennon Bridge in Lake Havasu City throughout the entire month of October. And we'll be commemorating about 50 years of honored traditions. The big event will be at the end of the month. Be sure to join us on Thursday, October 28th at 4:00 PM. That'll be at the stage under the bridge for the traditional dedication ceremony. And on Saturday at 10:00 AM, for the Lennon Bridge Days Parade in our downtown. And then at 5:30 that same day, for the Gala Dinner, they'll be hosted by Mayor Cal Sheehy at the Lennon Bridge Resort. Tickets for the Gala Dinner will be purchased by visiting the city's website at lhcaz.gov/50 or contact our local Chamber of Commerce at 855-4115. And finally, the information provided by the Mojave County Public Health Department. As you can see, the breakdown by month by month is indicated on the screen. Currently, there are 91 active cases of COVID in Lake Havasu City. Be smart, be diligent, and let's support one another. Mayor and Council, that concludes my report.
Thank you. All right, moving on to Item 8, our public hearings. We'll start with Item 8.1, Series 8 Convenance Liquor License for the Dixie Bell at 1477 Queens Bay. Ms. Williams.
Mayor and City Council, Keith Fernung has applied for a Series 8 Convenance Liquor License for Dixie Bell, located at 1477 Queens Bay. All posting requirements have been met, all fees have been paid and no objections were received. The location is properly zoned for a Series 8 liquor license. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do any members of the council have any questions for Ms. Williams? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Bring it back to council. Any further discussion or possible motion?
I motion.
Yeah, Councilmember Campbell.
I move to recommend the Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control approve a Series Number 8 Convenience Liquor Store License for Dixie Bell at 1477 Queens Bay. I move to recommend that the Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control approve Series Number 8 Convenience Liquor License for Dixie Bell at 1477 Queens Bay. Is that, did I do that right?
Yeah, the motion's good. Yeah, so you're recommending approval?
Yes.
Yeah, excellent. So we do have a motion. Is there a second? All right, great. We have a motion from Councilmember Campbell and we have a second from Councilmember Lane. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Just duplicate it. Okay.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is Item 8.2, is a Series 10 Beer and Wine Store Liquor License for Sunny Stop Gas at 1732 McCullough Boulevard South. Ms. Williams.
Mayor and City Council, Haran Osgood has applied for a Series 10 Beer and Wine Store Liquor License for Sunny Stop Gas, located at 1732 McCullough Boulevard South. All posting requirements have been met, all fees have been paid and no objections were received. The location is properly zoned for a Series 10 liquor license. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Have any members of the council for Ms. Williams? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for further discussion or a possible motion?
Mayor.
Councilmember Moses?
Motion.
Please.
I move to recommend that the Arizona Department of Liquor Licenses and Control approve a Series 10 Beer and Wine Liquor Store License for Sunny Stop Gas, 1732 McCullough Boulevard South.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Moses and a second from Vice Mayor Coke. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 8.3 is Adopt Ordinance Number 21-1270, amending Lake Havasu City Code, Chapter 9.20, Special Events, Section 9.30.020, Noise, Exceptions, and Section 8.16.300, Special Events Permit Required to Update Special Events Process and Requirements. Mr. Kozlowski.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is to adopt the special event changes in order to help streamline the process for our vendors moving forward. During the process of making these changes, we reached out to promoters for Desert Storm, IGSBA, as well as State Parks and Go Lake Havasu to gather their feedback in order to make sure that we were making this process easier for the applicants, as well as improving our communication between the applicant and city staff in order to make sure that we're having a safe and successful event, not only for the city, but also for the promoter as well. During that process, I was determined to increase the timeframe in order to submit an application from 30 to 60 days for our larger events such as Desert Storm and Run to the Sun that require more communication between city staff, require street closures, detailed trash plans and things of that nature to make sure that these promoters are putting our town back the way they received it, as well as making sure that these events are safe for residents and those who attend the event as well. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, thank you. So as part of that, we heard earlier at Call to the Public, a speaker about the 60 days. So there still is some flexibility built into the code that had the first read at our last meeting, obviously at this meeting, that for those larger events, it's 60 calendar days, but the city may consider less than 60 days for events that might just come up or that are small or might not require full street closures or police details or those types of things. So, but again, this will, as we discussed last time, it codifies and brings certainty to those event organizers. Obviously, it was crafted with their participation to make it easier for them. So. Are there any questions of council for Mr. Kozlowski?
Mayor, I had a question.
Yeah, Councilmember Moses.
How long does it take to get a liquor license for some of these events?
Mayor, Councilmember Moses, depends on the state. We receive the application from the promoter. It goes through the process of being verified by staff and then we send it off to the state for their review and their approval. At the moment, they are fairly slow. I make sure I, I inform the applicant that they need to get these in fairly early for their event in order to make sure that they're processed in a timely manner.
Yeah, because my experience with planning events is you want more than two months if you're, if you're really looking for a liquor license and to do the adequate planning. So I think this is a great step.
Thank you. Yeah, just for clarity, the liquor license is a state agency that they work with, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Councilmember Lynn.
I understand what we're doing, but I'm just curious. Were there issues in the past with people that were waiting 30 days? Like, I know you're talking about cleanup and road closures. Were we having a lot of problems?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lynn, we were. We, a lot of questions were coming up from our applicants and they were getting applicants, applications to us two weeks prior to their event. And when you have a road closure and you're requiring feedback from Parks, PD, Fire to make sure that these events are safe for everybody who attends them, it does take a little bit more planning time than two to three weeks. So within the handbook, we're also letting them know that they should probably start this process six months prior to their event. Just getting things together, making sure that they understand that this process, it does take some time, especially for new events. But we will continue to work with them, no matter the size of the event, and making sure that their event applications are processed in a timely manner.
One other question. And as for making the special exemptions, maybe we'll make an exception. Who makes that decision?
That will be myself. I will work with that applicant to make sure that they're not only, their event application isn't only processed as quickly as we possibly can, but making sure we educate them as they move forward, planning that event in future years.
Are there any questions or comments from members of the council? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to council for further discussion or a possible motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Dolan?
Motion.
Please.
I move to adopt Ordinance Number 21-1270, amending City Code Sections 9.30.020 and 8.16.300.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Dolan and a second from Councilmember Moses. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. All right, our final public hearing of the evening is Item 8.4, is Award Bid for Citywide Pest and Weed Control Services to Havasu Pest Control. Ms. Blakely.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. On September 1st, 2021, sealed bids were received and opened for citywide pest and weed control services. Bid notices were advertised in the Today's News Herald, as well as the Arizona Business Gazette, uploaded on both the Lake Havasu City and DemandStar websites and current service providers and local area businesses were notified. The services were divided into three categories. A category A being pest control, category B being weed control, and category C miscellaneous services. The city at this time has removed category C miscellaneous services from award considerations. And two bids were received by the stated deadline. The two responsive bidders were Havasu Pest Control and Parker Pest Control. Havasu Pest Control tonight is the discussion topic for an award of 142,600. Havasu Pest Control tonight is the discussion topic for an award of one hundred and forty-two thousand, six hundred and twenty. The city currently uses four different companies to meet our weed and pest control service needs. The centralization of the services under one contract Provides for a better use of staff resources and the ability to coordinate the weed and pest control services. The proposed contract is a year-to-year contract with a maximum term of five years. This approach allows the city to be flexible annually and assess the situation to determine the best approach. Last year, the city spent fifty-five thousand on contracted weed and pest control services. This figure does not include the expanded list of sites that are included on the proposed contract, Which include an additional nine areas for pest control and forty-seven for weed control. Some of the areas included now are fifteen booster stations, additional highways and roadways, And some police facilities inside and outside. The total staff time spent on pest and weed control services in years approximately a thousand hours. Eleven people are needed to cover all the areas that the city covers. In addition to a reduction in man-hours, the city will receive a reduction in chemicals and product cost needs To provide these services in-house. Staff evaluated components of the bids Received in addition to the bids submitted to the selection committee. These items included additional costs. One proposal included additional fees for callbacks. The others did not. One proposal included additional fees for after-hour services. The selected bid Does not. The warranties are a bit longer for the selected bid, And some of the history behind our selection and our determination was a very thorough due diligence process and a review Of our comfort level with previous providers. The proposed vendor provided a comprehensive list of chemicals and used a quick response time to emergencies and as-needed services provided. Any questions?
Yeah, thank you. So if I understand it, before the city did weed control in-house, and now we're looking to do it With a company, or we augmented it in-house?
So Before we did have our own staff or park staff doing weed control at several facilities that were not included In our regular maintenance throughout the city for pest control services. So we included those facilities this time around to as a cost, a potential cost savings, And allowed our staff to be freed up to do other activities within the city.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Are there any other questions from Ms. Blakely for members of the council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Councilmember Lynn.
I, I'm just curious. I know that we're trying to use one company, but I, looking at it, What is the reason we can't use two different companies? Because if you look at the Havasu Pest Control For pest control, they're a difference of twelve thousand dollars more. And then if you look on the weed control, The difference is twenty-two thousand, so one Is cheaper than the other. Why can't we use two different companies? I mean, if we're not taking it in-house anymore, what is the difference to have two different companies use it if it's going to save Like a ridiculous amount of money by using two different companies?
So the direction we got was to provide a more efficient and Coordinated effort throughout the city to consolidate multiple contracts that we had with several other companies And better coordinate how the activities, Whether it be pest control or weed control were being done and coordinated. So having two contracts isn't out of the question. It's at your discretion and what you feel is best at this time. However, From a contractual management perspective and staff resources devoted to maintaining that contract, The time savings and the ability to coordinate How the services are provided to each facility is what we were discussing.
I'm trying to follow you, but I'm, if we're taking it out of house, I don't know where we're, it's a cost savings to our staff if we're.
Can I make a comment to that? Because I had, my husband and I went over this quite a bit, because there was Three categories here. There was A, B, and C that went out for consideration, bid consideration. And when I saw the complaints that C was removed, then it immediately made the second bidder go up to the top. My blood was boiling Until I dug in a little deeper and realized that C categories, they didn't Havasu Pest Control didn't have their extensions put in, which would have been substantially different. What I'm going to say now with that is We also bid a lot of categories and products for Lake Havasu City, and if we get all of the bid, One side of our bid, let's just say if you do my ass, the asphalt, then we'll give you a better deal on concrete, or sometimes we'll do concrete. We'll give you a better deal on asphalt, or maybe we'll give you a better deal on chip seal if we get all of them. So when the bid tab went out, this is the way I understand it, the way the bid tab went out, it went for three different services. We literally had to kind of drop the C services because of the extension. Let's just say this, people, when it comes to us citizens, if we make one mistake, they'll throw you out. But the city can make a lot of mistakes and we gotta just deal with it. But in this case, it looks to me like category C didn't have their extensions. The nine dollar per foot versus the four, it's a long story. But that's, I understand why C went away, but as a company that offers multiple services, if we can get all The services, one item may be quite a bit less than the other. Did I kind of make sense to you on that? Because when you went out for bid, we went out for all these services under one package. And if you get a whole package, contractors treat them differently. So next time, either we send them all out individually, just individual items, or You combine them the way they did here, and then the one company sometimes will give you a deal one way or another. That's the way I understand it, and if anybody has any corrections, Please let me know.
Yeah, thank you. And just, it's easy to follow along because we have this right in front of us. So category A is pest control services throughout the community. Category B is weed control. The category C, which the city through this process Decided not to address at this point, is miscellaneous, which includes things like bat removal, mice, B WASP removal, those types of things, Which will still be done on an as-needed basis, as that's required from the group of different suppliers, but. Any other questions, comments from members of the council before we open the public hearing? No? All right, this is a public hearing. We'll go ahead and open that up. We did have one speaker sign up for this. Again, you don't have to sign up. We'll start with that speaker, Cindy Allow, welcome.
Good evening, Council. My name's Cindy Alloway. I'm with Parker Pest Control. And this whole process has been very like up-down, up-down. We bid the, we bid the weeds, we bid the pest control all on separate things. And as you can see with all I emailed to you guys, there is a chance for the city to save fifty thousand dollars by splitting this up. I can't imagine the city just wanting to go with one person because of You're saying it takes so long for workers and stuff, but I can tell you From experience, I've been doing a lot of the city weeds in different little areas for fifteen years. And all we have to do is call one person and let them know when we're going to start doing that. And they're always like, okay, tell us what month you're going to do it, and then we just email the bill off. I'm very familiar with like the different areas that are going to be serviced, so. It just raises red flags to me is why can't this be split up to save that? That's a lot of money. I mean, if you look at my numbers and theirs, it makes no sense to me why you would just throw that money out. So that's my, that's my two cents on it.
Yeah, we appreciate it. Thank you. Yes. Would anyone else like to address the, yes, sir, if you can just state your name for the record? Welcome.
Hi, Robert Fisher. I noticed you were going to streamline and make things more efficient and all of that. Are you going to lay anybody off? Are you going to save any actual personnel in your streamlining? Is you're going, are you going to reduce the cost of the city operation by putting these contracts out?
Yeah, there currently is providers, multiple providers that are pest control purveyors that are providing those services to the city, Augmented with city staff. So the city staff that is assigned to other duties, they'll continue to do those duties. But we're talking about the contract that we're using multiple service providers for right now.
So we really aren't going to save any money on the city staff?
We'll be able to have efficiency and save overall costs for pest and weed control, Depending on what happens on the miscellaneous category or those needs.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I can?
Yes.
And to respond to that also too, indirectly, the answer is yes, because we have a number of vacancies Within Lake Havasu City across all of our departments, including Parks Maintenance, Public Works and other departments. So we are stretched very, very thin right now with dozens, Dozens of vacancies throughout the organization.
Yeah, thank you. Would anyone else like to address the City Council on this matter? All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to council. I'm not sure who might be best to answer this question, but maybe Mr. Knudsen can start talking about the procurement process And how once Ms. Alloway mentioned about the savings, but that's after data came out from the sealed bid process. So maybe talk that through a little bit so we understand that better, and then maybe Ms. Gary.
Yeah, sure, Mr. Mayor. I'll start and then tell me if I'm going in the right direction. So the city staff, and we've identified the need for a centralized process with regards to our weed and pest control. We have a number of water tanks and booster stations and Public facilities and waste water treatment plants and all these different areas scattered throughout town That require, we require pest and weed control. Our residents expect that of us, that we are taking care of the properties that we have. We have four, we're using four different businesses right now for the, for weed and pest control. And so the idea here is to bring that under one umbrella, coordinate some of these efforts so we're not duplicating You know, some of the services that are provided. So we explain that and we tell that story And a RFP or Request for Proposal that's sent out to the private sector. And we're, we described that we need some pest control services. We described that we need some weed control services, and then And then the option C was the miscellaneous services that we were in search of. The private sector does the evaluation of what the cost would be and what they would charge the city, And we get those proposals that come back and As a city, we would review those and try to make a determination on the best path forward. We take in consideration cost, and we can take in consideration The approach and the resources available to provide that service. And then the history with the businesses that we've had experience with for the city. In this case, we, there was option, or excuse me, there was a breakdown of weed control and for pest control. If you add both of those categories up, Havasu Pest Control was the low bidder on their proposal. If you're looking at option A combined with option B, There, if you take, if you separate the two out, there is a difference of about thirty-four thousand dollars. That's tied to that contract. However, as Ms. Blakely indicated in her presentation, there's other costs associated with callbacks And after-hours and those types of services that are in there that bring that number, That shrink that number to a certain degree. And then again, just the history with, that we've had with the four different companies that have been out there. We've been very, very satisfied with Havasu Pest Control, so we know that we Contracts with that company would provide us with the services that we expect. Is that helpful?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Mayor? Yeah, Councilmember Dolan?
I have a question. I'm a little confused with some of the numbers. She was telling us we could save fifty-five thousand. We've mentioned, you mentioned possible thirty thousand in your calculations. I'm looking at the bid tabulation and the total award if we If we were to go to Parker Pest, it's ten thousand dollars more than Havasu Pest, but If we chose Parker Pest Control over Havasu Pest for pest control, they're about Twelve, they're about thirteen thousand dollars cheaper. So I'm a little confused how we're going to save thirty to fifty if it If we choose, if we give Havasu Pest Control weed control, because they're the cheapest at one hundred and seventeen thousand, And we give Parker Pest at twelve thousand, then we save thirteen thousand on the total bid, I guess. So I'm kind of confused where we're getting those numbers. I'm at page seven of the Bid tabulation.
Mayor, Councilmember Dolan, if you look at the very first page after the council communication, it shows a kind of a breakdown of category A For pest control and category B for weed control. You're looking at a difference of twelve thousand or thirteen thousand, I should say, for pest control. And Parker Pest Control comes in at twelve thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars. Havasu Pest Control comes in at twenty-five thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars. And then the difference with category B and the weed control is a difference there of twenty-two thousand. So that is the That is the math. Shannon, am I looking at this incorrectly? Because as I say that, that's not making sense to me as well. So there's a twelve thousand dollar savings, thirteen thousand dollar savings if Parker Pest Control was utilized for pest control. And then a twenty-two thousand? Yeah, twelve and twenty-two. Sorry, my math, yeah.
That's correct, yes.
Yeah, so it, yeah, so it's the twelve, the thirteen thousand plus the twenty-two thousand. If the bids were separated for, and that is on the bid, so the contract. And again, there's other costs that are tied to it, but that's the contractual obligation there. So that's the thirty-five thousand.
That doesn't make sense. No, because Parker Pest is one, yeah, let's just make sure we're looking on the same page. We'd save, it's ten thousand dollars cheaper to go with Havasu Pest for the whole thing. If we gave
Yes.
Parker Pest Control, the Pest Control, they're thirteen thousand dollars cheaper, so we would just save the thirteen thousand dollars. Because then we're still getting Havasu Pest is one hundred and seventeen thousand, and Parker Pest was one hundred and thirty-nine thousand for weed control.
Yeah, the total bid that came back is Havasu Pest Control is cheaper by ten thousand dollars.
Ten thousand, yeah. But if we'd separated it, we saved twelve thousand or thirteen thousand.
So the two line items before that, if you subtract the twelve minus twenty-five and subtract one thirty-nine from one seventeen, Add those two numbers together, that would be thirty-five thousand.
Yeah, but it's not really a savings.
If they were separated out.
If they were separated.
If they.
Mayor.
We're adding them. That doesn't make sense.
Everything that I've ever done on bid tabulation, whatever they put out to bid, and if they say to bid A, B, and C, And you've got to bid all three of them to get them even into process, because that's the way the process goes. It gives that one contractor the option to have all of them packaged together. You can't go back then and say, well, I'm going to pick that portion of the lowest bid and that portion of the lowest bid. It's a done deal. It's called a bid tabulation. Unless Mrs. Gary can tell me differently, but we go with the lowest contracted Bid, and it's under this bid tabulation that you see up there. So it's, as much as I totally agree with you, I wish we could go back and go, okay, we got Havasu Pest Control we're going to use For this, and we're going to use Parker Pest for this. That's not the way any bidding process I've been experienced. And seriously, the option C should have been in there, which option C, the way it looks right now, would make it be That Havasu Pest Control would win it hands down, except for there was one extension Of a nine dollars that should have been times eleven thousand square foot that they didn't do their extension on. So then that just threw the C out completely. And that's where I barely found that, and that was my husband and I the very last minute, because I've been looking at this for Days, because I really was concerned that if we had all these bid You know, and then all of a sudden the city staff says, oh, we'll just throw out C, and then the other guy gets the bid, all of it. That's, that really made me angry until I realized we had a discrepancy in C. If I clarified that at all.
Yeah.
But that's how that is. And then when you do have that many options and you can supply that many services, Some things are cheaper and some things are more.
I remember we did the bathrooms and that rotary at the beaches, and there was like three different companies. I'm like, well, this one was a little bit cheaper and this one, But it doesn't work that way. It's.
If we wanted to next year, go back and have them align to do each individual one separately?
Yeah, that makes.
But when it goes to bid and the process goes out there, and then we get our bid presented, it could be higher than all of this. Because if we get it all, we do, we give, we give some discounts if we get the whole deal. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Councilmember Lynn.
I just, I don't know who can answer this, maybe somebody in maintenance. The pest control, I'm assuming is, that's going to be like a monthly thing. The weed control, is that monthly? Is that Biannual? Like, can you tell me when those services are?
So we asked around and around the staff, and it's multiple times a year. And on an as-needed basis, It could be we have some weeds growing in a different area and we need to send somebody out. But typically, it's semi-annually and annually.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. The weeds is semi-annually? So it's only twice a year?
Correct.
All right, are there any additional questions at council? Any further discussion?
Mayor?
Yes.
I make a motion.
Okay.
I move to award the bid for citywide pest and weed control services to Havasu Pest Control, Inc., in the amount not to exceed one hundred and forty-two thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars, and authorize city staff to exercise the options to renew annually for a maximum of four additional twelve-month periods.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Dolan and a second from Councilmember Lane. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries six to one.
Thank you. All right, item nine is our current events. Are there any current council committee reports? Seeing none, then we'll move on to future meetings. Our next meeting is Tuesday, October twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-one, at six P M. It is a regular meeting. And then on Tuesday, November ninth, at six P M., we'll have a regular meeting as well. Item eleven, is there any future discussion items? All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All right, we're adjourned. Thank you everyone for being here. Be kind. We'll see you next time.